Okay, so we are out of executive session to pull the regular meeting back to order. First item on our agenda tonight is a discussion item for Farm View Estates previously known as Old Orchard at Riverhead. Greg?
Hello, members of the board. I'll just let, I believe for this application, we have Jeff Butler and Steve LaScuadro was here.
Steven?
Steven, yeah.
Yes.
Jeff, are you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right, excellent, get started. All right, good evening, planning board. We're here to discuss the Farm View Estates major subdivision. The planning department has received and reviewed three sketch plans which were submitted in furtherance of a major subdivision application, which is proposing to subdivide an existing 26.1 acre irregularly shaped parcel of land, which is located on the north side of Middle Road approximately 680 feet east of the intersection of Middle Road and Harrison Avenue. Just for a brief history, a recap on the application. The planning board by resolution number 2019-115 dated December 5th, 2019 did approve a yield map entitled proposed sketch, I believe it, proposed yield map for Old Orchard at Riverhead. The approval resolution included a condition that upon submission of a sketch plan, the applicant must identify how the application will comply with the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. The original yield map that the planning board approved by resolution 19-115 approved a development yield of 22 lots. The applicant's design professional has identified in their sketch plan, they are electing to take the increased density bonus as afforded by the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, which is a 10 percent density bonus. It effectively gives them three additional lots. Now those three lots must be maintained and sold as defined as affordable housing by the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. So the sketch plans currently before the board now show 25 lots which do comply with the act. Also noting, the application was renamed to Farm View Estates to avoid further confusion with any previous Old Orchard subdivisions throughout the town. The applicant did submit three sketch plans, one sketch plan entitled Sketch Plan A, one entitled Sketch Plan C, and one entitled Alternative Cluster Two. Our town's consulting engineer in a memo dated September 3rd reviewed the three sketch maps. I won't go through his entire memo verbatim, I will refer, defer to the summary that he provided. So Mr. Guardiello stated that the design layout for Sketch Plan A fails to address our previous concerns related to the potential impacts of stormwater runoff from the farm field to the north, as well as the natural flow of stormwater through a portion of the site. The design layout for Sketch Plan C addresses our concerns relating to the potential impacts of stormwater runoff through the site, while the issue relating to the farm field can be mitigated. The design layout for Alternative Cluster Two addresses our concerns relating to the potential impacts of stormwater runoff through the site and from the farm field to the north. Mr. Guardiello did state that prior to the planning board approving any of the sketch plans, the site photography which was shown on previous maps should be added to the plan. In addition, the owner and address of the owner and utilities along Middle Road need to be depicted on the plan as stipulated in the zoning code. Staff comments that they relate to the application. So as Mr. Guardiello said, I believe it was Sketch Plan A does not adequately address any of the stormwater concerns that he has. He had, Sketch Plan C does address some of them, and I believe he said we can mitigate them. Now, Alternative Cluster Plan Two of the three sketch plans that have been submitted, the concept behind this plan is the most desirable. This sketch plan does serve to preserve approximately 15 acres of open space. Right now, the parcel is heavily wooded. So the Alternative Sketch Plan Two does preserve 15 acres of open space, and eliminates most of the grading and disturbance in the western portion of the property, which is the area that's directly affected by that tributary area on the farm to the north. So although this plan is the most desirable, there are some concerns that staff had about to the degree to which the lots have been clustered. The lots range in size from 9,425 square feet through 17,731 square feet. The larger lots being located towards the northern end of the cul-de-sac. Now, I'm not sure clustering generally requires a 70/30 split, and they want to preserve 70 percent. It just seems like I'm not sure if the board would want to approve, you know, a 25 lot subdivision where the lots are down to, you know, most of them are probably down to about 9,500 square feet, 10,000. Staff would recommend that the applicant prepare a similar plan if the board agrees. They can show some slightly larger lots, it looks like they can expand it out to the west a little bit. Still serves to preserve a lot of that wood, the wooded area on the western side of the lot. Still eliminate the disturbance, but still be able to, you know, market a subdivision where you've got lots that may range, you know, get up to like 12,000 square feet, whatever the practical applications of it would be.
Sketch Plan C?
Yes.
Is that, is that supposed to have 25 lots?
Uh, yes, so all of these sketch plan, the, the sketch plans that are submitted are predicated upon a as-of-right development yield of 25. So they're, they're electing to get that 10 percent density bonus as afforded by the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. So all of the lots will show 25 lots, those three extras.
It only shows 22. In fact, it even says a plan that I have. Maybe I haven't.
No, you're actually correct, they did not. Well, I mean Sketch Plan C, I believe, was the, the least desirable. It did in a, I don't know, Sketch Plan C did have, they would, they would need to demonstrate how this map complies with the workforce housing act. Apologize, I did not catch that, but yes, right now it only shows 22, so. If the board was to go with that, with that plan, they would either need to voluntarily lose a lot to bring it down to 21, or to show the 25 lots. Okay. So what is the, the board?
Well, I, I really like the alternative one, alternate one, with the open space, but I would like to see the larger lots. The only other thing, the, the parcel that says Crystal Coast Communications, Inc., that says it's vacant to the west?
Yes.
There's a house there.
There's also a medication towel on it.
Yeah. We could have the applicant address that in a revision. Did any of the other members want to weigh in on the different sketch plans, do they agree with the alternative?
I'll be happy to chime in, I think a 9,000 square foot lot is ridiculous.
Yeah, they gotta be bigger.
I certainly agree with that.
I think it's about the size of George's house.
I just, I, I don't like, I don't like the, the area around the building envelopes, because we know what happens to those.
Yep.
They just.
They encroach and encroach and cut trees.
Nobody's gonna police it, and you're not gonna make them put up fences, so. I mean, I think the layout for the, the alternate, alternative one is probably the best layout, but I think we need to make the lots bigger.
Does the board agree?
What does the applicant, what's the applicant's story?
Um.
You wanna go to 21 lots, or you wanna go to 25?
I believe, uh, Steve, I think Steve, the question was.
Yes, I couldn't, I couldn't hear well.
Is, is the intent to go with the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, and you are, you do intend to do 25 lots, correct? With the three.
Correct, yes.
With the three preserved as defined as affordable housing.
Yes.
Um, so.
And, and Greg, I don't know if it's a, a good time for me to interject, or if there's, if you want me to wait.
No, I mean, feel free, if you have comments, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, no, I just, I just, what I wanted to add was, or just set forth was that the applicant's preference is, is to move forward with Sketch Plan A. It, it's a similar layout with a similar product as the applicant has had at the Bating Hollow Old Orchard subdivision, which the town is very familiar with, which the town knows has been successful, so we know that it's been well received. So that is the applicant's preference. Now, I know that there has been the issue raised with respect to mitigating the drainage issue to the north. And what we believe is that we can very successfully in short order address that, and that Jeff Butler, Mr. Butler, could address that in a relatively short period of time, and he's very confident that he can address the drainage issues that have been raised. Jeff, if you're there, perhaps it would be a good time for you to, to join in, in that I know you wanted to explain your position regarding that, and how you feel that you could address that in relatively short order and successfully.
Sure, can, can you hear me?
Yep, we got you.
So the, as Steve had mentioned, the applicant's preference is Sketch A, because that's the, the product that he's familiar with and has had a lot of success with over in Bating Hollow, and the houses that he's been able to market would, would fit nicely on those lots. I did receive Mr. Guardiello's comments and Greg's reiteration of those comments, and, and terms of the drainage. We've designed the recharge basin that you see on that map to accommodate that tributary area to the north, and we have mapped it and have modeled the runoff from it to be accepted into that recharge basin. We just need to add to that map what we added to the map back in 2006, when this was approved as a sketch as Emerald Meadows. Some drainage easements going up between a couple of the lots, I think they were between lots 11 and 12 and 9 and 10 to capture some of that. And the point is very well taken, and, and good engineering practice, that the, that plan should be subject to grading plans for those lots adjacent to that area to make sure that the, when the lots are developed, that the runoff is indeed captured as the model will, will demonstrate in the SWIP report when we get to that point, and recharged into that basin. That basin, we are, the basin that you see, we're, we're required to design for an eight inch rainfall for the all combined tributary areas based on runoff coefficients. And right now, that basin you see accounts for a 12 inch event, 24 hour event, without taking into account infiltration bonuses that will occur once we get into the SWIP. That includes, we have modeled our tributary area, and again, this was previously approved and accounted for, slightly over 1,347,000 square feet to the north of this property. And we just have to provide the drainage through a few easements between lots to capture it and get it into the storm drainage system that preliminarily is designed at least on that sketch plan.
If I can weigh in, I, I'm agreeing with you on A, but my problem is I would like to see more land left open. By reducing, by reducing the size of some of the lots and giving us more open space.
So I looked at, I, I, I did, when I read Greg's comments about that, exactly that, Mr. Bear, I, I did a few quick sketches, and I think that we can easily, we're at about 30,000 square foot average on this map as we are in Bating Hollow, but I, I did take a look at the marketable properties and what we had built out there, and we could probably get about 3,000 or 4,000 square feet off of those lots and into the open space, which would yield an increase in the open space of about a third, which is presented before you tonight. So it'd add about, I think my calculations were an acre and a half. Would add, would be added to the open space by doing exactly that with these lots, maybe get them down about 26. As long as we can apply the Residence B setbacks to them, those houses would fit just fine and provide these people with a nice, a nice yard to.
Jeff, what size would that make the lots, do you know?
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear you.
Do you know what size that would make the lots?
Yeah, 27,000.
Probably about 26 to 27,000, probably 27 average, thousand square feet.
Thank you.
Getting them down to half an acre is problematic because of the geometry of the lot. It's, you know, a lot itself, they're, they become very awkward, and we don't want to design things that are gonna appear before the zoning board when it comes time to put a house that, you know, we didn't take into account the size of house that needs to go on the lot to make it, to add value to it. So I think getting, I think I could easily do what Mr. Bear suggested, and, and get it about another acre and a half of open space using Sketch Plan A. And I could certainly mitigate the concerns about the drainage, as I previously had done in 2006, to Mr. Guardiello's satisfaction. So that, that's, that's what I wanted to add.
So I mean, Mr. Butler stated that he could get about another acre and a half of open space. Right now, I think Sketch Plan A shows about 3.3, so I mean, he can get it close to five acres of open space. I mean, I, I do note that clustering is not required in the RB40 zoning district, like it is in the RA80, RB80, and the APZ. So I mean, really, you know, them preserving land while it's not required by code, it's just, you know, a nice planting tool, way to preserve some trees, preserve some open space. So I mean, if the board's amenable to it, obviously pending the satisfaction of the drainage and stormwater runoff, the board would like to see a similar plan to Sketch Plan A, showing a little more.
So I, just a question, I think Steve mentioned that the comparison to the Bating Hollow project was a success. What are you judging it's success by, is what my question is?
Oh, how, how do I, how did I characterize, or why do I characterize it as successful?
Right, based on marketing them and selling them, or, or what it looks like today?
Yes, that has been, it's been well received by the public, and so we know that that particular layout with the product that they have, which again is a known commodity to the town, and, you know, my, my full understanding is, is that it's been viewed as, as a successful project by the town. We know that, that has worked there, so that's why we're inclined to say we'd like to move forward with Sketch Plan A. Of course, with the mitigation of the drainage concerns, as Jeff says that he can do, and with some reengineering and reconfiguring so we can get the extra open space, as he just said he has a way to do as well, which I think then would satisfy the various comments that have been made to this point.
Hey Steve, who's gonna own the open space in the common areas?
Excuse me?
Who's gonna own the open space lot?
I don't know.
Okay, I guess that's one of the questions we have to get answered also.
We'll, we'll have, I mean, we'll, we'll address that.
Well, that's kind of what I'm getting at, because, you know, the, the, the one that you're using as a comparison, yes, it looks nice to drive by, but if you really look in those backyards, in the fence that they put up, people are encroaching over those fences, and it's an issue. They've encroached on all that open space on several of those lots. So that, that's the only, only reason why I point that out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I just, I want to point out that the fences I think you see are the clearing limits.
Jeff, we can't really hear you.
I, I think the fences you may be seeing are not the open space, but would be the clearing, the, what was defined as the clearing limits on the lot.
We had an issue that somebody came back here, and we took a look, and they were obviously, it was obvious that they were on the, the open space. And that's typically what happens, I mean, it's just natural for people to start storing stuff on the, on these properties.
So, in this case with this design, we're not backing the lots up to the open space?
And you're probably moving the recharge basin down.
Something they're gonna have to address.
We're sep, we're separating the open space.
And you're probably moving the recharge basin up just to make that one large open space?
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, the, the only, I mean, looking at Sketch Plan A, the only lot that really fronts on the open space would be Lot 1. The rest of the open space, the, you know, approximately almost two acres fronts right up to the recharge basin. So I mean, if they push everything back, you'd still only really have one lot that fronts on that open space.
All right, yeah, but you know, when they start dumping on it and all that, who's responsible? You know, we've, we've been through this, we gotta have that, those questions answered.
So is, is it just for clarification for the applicant, is the direction of the board, reduced size of the lots for Sketch Plan A include the topo back on the map? And is that what the board would like to see?
And let us know what's gonna happen here.
All right, so we got that, the Sketch Plan A with the reduced size of the lots, a little more open space, and you would have to identify who's gonna maintain and how that open space area will be maintained.
Okay.
And, and the topo added to the map.
And all the houses surrounding the area.
And the houses. I'll, I'll write up a memo, I'll, I'll just put something in writing so they can have something to reference. Any other questions?
Not for me.
All right. I think we're good, Jeff and Steve, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda tonight is the vistas at Bating Hollow.
I believe we have Chris Kent here representing the application. All right, so the planning department has received and reviewed a amended site plan application, which, which is seeking to amend the final site plan approved by Riverhead Planning Board Resolution Number 2018-53, dated June 21st, 2018. That resolution approved a final site plan application known as the vistas at Bating Hollow to permit the construction of 21 condominium dwelling units spread out over three buildings, which consisted of a 10-unit structure, six-unit structure, and a five-unit structure, as well as approved the conversion of six existing dwelling units within an existing three-story building into condominium units. The Riverhead Planning Board also approved a condominium map for the vistas at Bating Hollow by Resolution Number 2018-87 dated December 20th, 2018. The subject property identified as Suffolk County Tax Down Number 600-40-5-6.1 is an 8.08 acre parcel of land on a private right of way known as Fox Hill Drive, located off of Oakley Avenue in the hamlet of Bating Hollow. The site is presently undergoing heavy construction, and the six, existing six unit condominium in the parcel has been demolished at this time. The units that are, that were approved by the planning board are currently being built. Upon evaluating the site plan amendment application, following is noted. If approved by the planning board, approval of this site plan amendment will require the applicant to amend the condominium map, which was approved by the planning board. Staff recommends that amendment of the condominium map be required prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any of the units on site. The plan does not propose any increase in the number of dwelling units. The existing six units will be removed and will be replaced with six new dwelling units. The planning board should determine whether it would need a recommendation of approval for the architectural review board for this project, as the new building will be in harmony, both architecturally and aesthetically, with the other three units which were approved by the planning board. The footprint of the existing six unit condominium, which was demolished, was 4,839 square feet. The proposed footprint of the new building is 3,606 square feet, which represents a reduction of 1,233 square feet. Although the proposed impervious surface coverage of 47.2 exceeds the maximum of 15 percent as permitted in the RA80 zoning district, the reduction in the footprint of the building actually represents a reduction in the nonconformity of the site, and as such, relief will not be required from the zoning board of appeals. It is noted that construction of the six units at this time would be optimal as the site's currently undergoing heavy construction. Permitting the construction of this building now would allow all the site work to be completed at once, and would allow the roadway repairs and any other necessary site remediation to be accomplished upon completion of the project, rather than at a later date. We do note that health department approval will be required for the construction of the new building, and if approved by the planning board, the amendments should be incorporated into a new MYLAR packet which details the total changes to the site, including any lighting or landscaping changes. Now, I did refer the plans to the water district, I have spoken with them, just waiting for confirmation. As that existing six unit condominium was initially constructed as a modeled unit, and they were then converted to dwelling units, it's unclear whether or not key money fees were paid for those six additional units. Pending clarification and confirmation from the water district, if it, if we find out that key money was not paid for those six units, that would be made a condition of approval prior to certificate of occupancy if the board approves the amended site plan application.
Will they ever occupy?
Yeah, they will.
Yeah, we, we can confirm, first of all, I, I want to confirm that Town Board Resolution 219-353, which provided for the payment of key monies for the new 21 units plus the existing six units. By that resolution, the key money to be paid included all 27 units. I can provide that to you, Greg, it's, it's clear in the resolution, there's a calculation of groundwater gallons per day of flow, and it includes all 27 units.
You said that was Town Board Resolution 19-353?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
The calculation is in the resolution.
Does that mean it was paid?
And the monies have been paid, yes, and I approve the payment of those monies.
Okay.
All right, so, I mean, I, I'll just, I'll, I don't doubt it, I don't doubt that, I'll confirm that. Did the board have any other questions about this application?
I don't think A or B is necessary again. Do you agree?
No, I agree.
Yeah, I.
We're using the same, we're using the same materials, same design as was approved by the ARB on January 5th, 2017.
Right, okay. So.
Why did they do this? Why did they destroy existing units?
It wasn't a model building. But. It was modeled, these were modeled units?
Right.
They were never supposed to be occupied, well, personally told me, but they were never supposed to be.
Well, and if I could answer Joe, Joe, this is actually a good thing, because the six units that were in the model building all exceeded 1,200 square feet. So if you did the sanitary density calculation under the health department, that building would be in excess of the 1,350 that it was approved for, but it was grandfathered in by a prior approval. We are now building six units that are all less than 1,200 square feet. So from a sanitary design flow standards of the health department, we're building a building that now complies with Article 6.
Yep. So there are three buildings that are in, in the staff report, but there's four on the plan. One is one of the ones that were converted.
Yes, the, on the dimensional plan, you've got the 10-unit condominium, the six-unit condominium, and the five-unit condominium to the north. Those are the ones that were approved by the prior planning board resolution. The new one that says six-unit condo that's got the little cloud around it, that's the location of the new unit.
Okay.
So in that location, that's where they demolished the, the model units.
So that six unit building would now be two stories instead of three stories, so there'll be less height, less footprint, and less total square footage than the existing building.
And I would also note, Mr. Kent did provide us with a, a letter of support from the HOA. So if the board's agreeable, you know, I think we could prepare an administrative resolution, administrative approval resolution for the next meeting. and allow them, obviously, there'll be conditions upon Health Department, any necessary conditions, but I can prepare that resolution for the board.
Okay, I don't have any issue with that, bud.
Okay. All right.
Very good.
All right, we're good, Chris. Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, next item, East End Country Kitchens.
All right, so this is just a very quick update to, uh, bring the board up to speed. Uh, this is regarding the East End Country Kitchens preliminary site plan application, which, as you recall, is located on the west side of Edwards Avenue at one twenty-one Edwards Avenue. Um, it's a site plan application seeking to construct a five thousand seven hundred and sixty square foot, single-story warehouse building and perform related site improvements, including re-landscaping and re-vegetation to comply with Pine Barrens compatible growth area, uh, clearing requirements. Um, the applicant did receive the necessary DEC Wild Scenic Recreational Rivers permit dated August seventeenth. We are getting the Pine Barrens compliance through our zoning code, uh, so they did not need a hardship permit or anything from the Pine Barrens. So, I have prepared a preliminary site plan approval resolution, uh, for the board to consider at this meeting.
So, I, I think what we left off on is it was just a matter of the landscaping on that.
On the west, the western side, which.
The re-vegetation.
Yes, it was cleared by the golf course to the north.
Right.
Uh, sometime in the nineties, I'm not really sure. But, like I said, the applicant has prepared a landscaping plan which complies with the DEC planting requirements. They're planting several hundred plants in the site, so they're gonna re-vegetate it probably better than it was originally. Ready for a preliminary approval at this one.
Okay, okay.
Uh, I would just note, a- as I was reading through the resolution, um, I did leave out, I would like to add a recitation, on page three, I would like to add it after I reference the title, I would just like to include a recitation that whereas a duly noticed public hearing was held by the planning board on April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. Uh, I will amend the resolution, uh, when I get back to the office. I just wanna put that on the record, that will include that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, the next one is a Campana Residence Chaplain two nineteen. Post Landing Road. Is anyone on for this one, John?
Uh, just the architect, though, Louis Campana.
Oh, is this his house? Is this his house?
Uh, his parents' house.
Okay. Do we have him on?
Yes.
He's on?
Uh, yes, I'm here, Louis Campana, yes.
Okay, we got you.
Evening, gentlemen.
Okay, so the planning department has received and reviewed a Chapter two nineteen Coastal Ocean Hazard Line current application to demolish an existing one-story frame house, construct a new two-story frame house, laminate of the existing home location, and construct a new sewage disposal system. With regards to SECRE, it's unlisted action, coordinated review being optional, not recommended. The project site is located at thirty ten Hull Standing Road, Bungalow E eleven in Waiting River on the northern side of Oak Street in Oakwood on the Sound within the RB eighty zoning use district on a twenty-one point two-nine acre parcel. The site is presently improved, the one-story framed house and parking area within the community of approximately a hundred-plus homes. The application has received the New York State DEC Letter of Non, Letter of Non-Jurisdiction dated May sixth, twenty twenty, being that the proposed home is laminate of the CHL line. Um, with regards, I conducted a site visit on September twenty-third. Just some concerns with logistics of, of the project. The existing site conditions are very steep along the front of the house on Oak Street and pose an issue to stormwater management and erosion control before, during, and after the demolition and construction phases. The roads located within Oakwood on the Sound are privately owned, very narrow, and do not allow for two-way traffic or passing vehicles. Concerns were raised about the potential construction materials and it being transported to the worksite. Also, the roads within Oakwood on the Sound have no curbing to control or manage stormwater runoff. In a memo dated July seventeenth, twenty twenty, the town's consulting engineer had no objection taken to the proposed improvements. An engineering approval rec- recommended, conditioned that the installation and maintenance of the silt fence, as shown on the survey, shall be required. We note that the temporary silt fence shall be reinforced and conform to the standards and specifications of New York State DEC Erosion and Sediment Control. No, with less than an acre. Uh, Oakwood on the Sound, the applicant has obtained and submitted a building permit, permit number one eighty-one, approved by Oakwood on the Sound Board of Directors and signed by the Building Permit Chairman dated August twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen. Staff recommends that the planning board classify the action listed, assume agency without need of court view, issue a negative declaration and grant approval. Condition upon following that they shall not commence any construction, seaward of the top of bluff, that they are to obey town code ordinances for work hours and noise levels. And prior to the issuance of the building permit, per the town consulting engineer, they design a silt, the silt fence will be required and designed to New York State DEC Erosion Sediment Control specifications.
Hey, John?
Yes.
I see it says here, construct a new sewage disposal system. Is that a sewage treatment plant? Is it one of the new plants or is it just a septic?
Septic system.
Septic, okay.
So, and, uh, the contract. I, I looked in the building permit, it was approved by the building department with conditions that they have to be inspected by the Health Department.
So, it's going across the street?
Yes.
And whose property is it across the street?
It's, it's like a little parking area. There's, it's, there's not really.
Common area?
Yeah, like a common area. It is not really, I looked on the town G I S, there's not really too much of a delineation about which property is owned by whom. It's more or less like the entire parcel is one parcel. It's not like other maps where they own the house and the surrounding lands, the HOA.
Don't you lease the land there? No one really owns the land, you lease it. It's all common.
Excuse me?
It's all common in there. You, you lease it, you don't, no one owns the land.
Yes.
Maybe Mr. Campana can explain. I mean, I guess the association's okay with that, the way that's designed? I, I assume.
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
That's right, gentlemen. The, uh, the association has, um, already approved this application. Um, a- and the land is owned by the association, so if you think of, think of it, it's almost like a cooperative. Uh, so the, so the, the people own the homes, however, the land is owned by the association.
Is it serviced by the Riverhead Water District?
Yeah. Yes.
Is it serviced by the Riverhead Water District currently?
Yes, it's on here. So.
Can you repeat that?
Is it currently serviced by the Riverhead Water District, the property, the cooperative?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
Yeah, it is.
Water District, yes.
It's shown on here. So, what about the septic for the other homes on either side? Do we know where they're located?
The septic for the homes on either side, uh, they're not shown on this plan, but most of them are located, um, quite close to the actual structures themselves. Uh, and, and they're cesspools, they're not necessarily septic systems. Um, so what, what we're doing is, and the reason why we're doing is, because it has to be a certain distance from the house and by building a new structure, we're required to implement a new system. So, this is why we're planning to install it across the way.
No, I, I'm not questioning, you know, where you, how, or why, or where you're doing it, just, you know, to avoid conflicts with other, you know, cesspools that aren't shown on here.
What would happen if, if two or three other people, neighbors, came and wanted to do the same thing? How would it affect having to put in this new septic system? Would it, in fact, be a problem? Because this one now is across the street. Would they all have to go across the street? Would they be too close together now?
Hey, George, I think that might be a moot point because I'm pretty sure the county's gonna make all new construction, have those.
I know, I know, but my, my question is.
Location limits, right?
You know, yeah, I mean, what, what happens if, you know, the neighbors on either side to try, try to do the same thing? They come to us? Now they have to put this.
Well, I think at, I think at the time when a new proposal would be in front of the board or up for approval with the Health Department, that would be studied to see the proximity or compare the proximity to our system. So, the reason why we put it directly across the way is because that's actually used by the people in eleven E for a parking area. So, each person on the actual bluff has that area across the street that they can use. So, at the time where, you know, when or if, uh, Bungalow E ten or E twelve on either side look to renovate or, or construct, you know, a, a new dwelling, then our system would have to be taken into account at that time.
Okay, so how close to these new systems, how close can they be in relation to one another?
I would not be able to answer that question for you. Um, which Tom Walpert was here to answer that question. But it looks like, right now, they'd be most likely around twenty feet apart, if not more, if there was one proposed across the street from either of those houses.
Is that a problem?
Well, I mean, it's all their property. I think. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Health Department would have to approve it.
No, I, I, I know that, but I'm, what I'm saying.
So, are all the homes on public order up here?
That's correct, yes.
All right, I, I think really the Health Department will.
Yeah.
Dive into all that and map it for future. But I, it just, you know, I just, the question I had reference to the houses next door, so. Anything else, Joe?
Nope.
What, have any other questions or comments?
No, sure. Nope, thank you.
Okay, thank you, though. Should be.
Thank you.
We have a resolution for this tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll take up a resolution, uh, later on in the meeting for this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, next item, uh, forty-eight Cromer LLC. This is for a new liquid petroleum, liquid propane, uh, facility.
Correct. Good evening, everybody. Jeff Murphy for the record. Joining us on Zoom this evening is the applicant, Ray Kickoff, the project architect, Marty Semuluski, and Marty's assistant, Arthur Rast. Uh, y'all have a copy of my September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty staff report. The propane distribution facility is a special permit use in the industrial A zoning district and by Town Board Resolution twenty twenty dash four seventy-seven was approved by the Town Board, uh, on September fifteenth. Just one correction in my staff report, the item description under the special permit, what they actually approved, that's not correct. That was for the original application. As a result of the DEC approval, they had to scale down the project. So, the actual application consists of the demolition of the existing building and to construct approximately two hundred and seventy thousand gallons of a liquid propane facility, which consists of nine thirty thousand gallon tanks and one and two-story industrial building, uh, with accessory office, which totals twenty-six thousand four hundred and forty-eight square feet and associated site improvements. Subject property is approximately four acres in size. Uh, it's located on the east side of Cromer Avenue, uh, just north of West Main Street. Surrounding uses consist of the Paraco propane tank facility to the south that's served by rail service. Uh, to the east and to the north are, uh, storage warehousing uses and to the west is, um, a junkyard, so to speak, with a warehouse attached with it. The subject property is, for lack of a better word, is a mess right now. Um, there's a lot of abandoned former uses on the property, a lot of C and D in the property. Uh, perhaps the most defining, uh, characteristic of the property are three abandoned rail cars consisting of one really old box car and two cabooses. Uh, they will be removed, yes. I've been working with, I've spoken with the applicant, um, about the dis- disposition of those, uh, those, those free cars. Uh, by the way, just, uh, before I continue, I did speak with Marty Semuluski at length today reviewing the staff report, so, um, he is prepared to address the issues that I'm, I'm about to, to raise. Uh, in terms of SECRE, this was a pipe one action pursuant to SECRE and by Town Board Resolution twenty twenty dash one thirty-eight, Town Board claimed lead agency status, issued a negative declaration pursuant to SECRE, finding that proposed uses will not have a significant adverse environmental impact. The subject application, uh, subject property is located in the WSSR area, the Wild Scenic Recreation Area, uh, by DEC. The applicant did submit application to DEC and, uh, the result of its location, uh, they required the applicant to, uh, restore approximately one-third of the property to the north. Uh, this property has, was, originally had woods at one point that were, uh, a lot of them were cut down. Uh, there's been a lot of disturbance, a lot of C and D in the area, so the applicant is gonna have to do some extensive, um, site re-vegetation restoration.
Green area?
That is correct. Yeah, if you take a look in the staff report, it's, it's, it's green.
Right.
Yep. Uh, and they, uh, they do have a restoration plan approved by DEC. Uh, on, going on, uh, the Zoning Board of Appeals in terms of variances, they do show a decorative and security wall along the front, along Cromer Avenue. And while it's decorative, it consists of a four-foot tall, uh, stone-based bottom and went along with two-foot tall, uh, iron rod fence above that, which is, which is six feet in tall. The code does not allow six-foot fences in the front yard. The applicant would either have to reduce this height of the fence or would seek a variance from the zoning board.
Four-foot stone fence isn't good enough?
No, four, well, they, they would like to have the six-foot, the iron rod for security purposes, being a propane facility. And he, they're prepared to address that. In terms of sanitary calculations and sanitary flow, uh, they are outside the Riverhead Sewer District. Uh, there are no properties, uh, sewer lines along Cromer Avenue, so they are gonna have to use the standard tank and rings. Uh, given the, um, groundwater management zone three, uh, they are exceeding the allowed ground, um, the Suffolk County, uh, sanitary load, they would need to import approximately one point four six Pine Baron credits. And that would be subject to any approval by this board. In terms of landscaping, uh, we would like to see the, uh, re-vegetation plan actually shown on the site plan and the types of plants. Uh, on the, uh, index of plants that they are proposing, uh, they do not show the size of the plants. Any tree should be a minimum of three and a half inch caliper and shrub should be a minimum of five gallons in size. They're proposing an RPC hotbox enclosure along Cromer Avenue. It should be screened in some manner and, uh, that's, I think it's, um, I didn't highlight it on my box, uh, my sheet. Uh, there it is. It's be, actually located behind the decorative fence, so it would not be seen from Cromer Avenue. On the east side of the property, they are proposing, uh, some bushes and landscaping, which, um, no, no disrespect to Marty and, and to the applicant, really makes no sense because the only people that would be seeing it is the existing warehouse industrial use to the east of them. My recommendation is to take those, uh, bushes and shrubs, put those in, along the landscaping along Cromer Avenue and just have gravel along the east side of the property line. Uh, they do show, or post-resending sign, but that's subject to a, a sign permit and application to the Architectural Review Board and not part of this application. Uh, we did get a copy of the, of the site plan, uh, on site, site lighting plan. Uh, the fixtures that they show on the lighting plan do not match what's on the, uh, company's website. They didn't include the actual, um, head fixtures in, on the, in the applic- in the site plan or the lighting plan. And like I said, the, uh, the actual, um, model numbers don't match up with what the, you know, products are on the website. So, the, uh, and Marty's aware of that and he's gonna clarify that. Lighting plan also needs to show the degrees, uh, the, the color temperature shall not exceed three thousand degrees, um, max and that the, uh, light bulbs will be an LED. Big concern that staff had about the application is the onsite circulation. If you take a look at the loading bay located in the southeast corner of the building, it is really, really tight between the loading bay because it's, it's a sloping bay down, so a tractor-trailer truck would actually drop down so that the bay would be, uh, in line with the back of the bed of the truck. Uh, if you know David Anjuskevich, one of our fire marshals, he was a former truck driver before, uh, becoming a fire marshal and he said there's no way you can back-to-back tractor-trailer and that and, uh, even a straight axle truck, just like a step truck, would have a hard time navigating between the propane tanks and the entrance and backing into that loading bay. I did speak with Marty about it to see if there's any possibility of perhaps shifting the propane tanks farther to the south and taking some of the trucking. the propane tanks farther to the south and taking some of those parking spaces, the south of propane tanks, and maybe putting those to the north to give more circulation availability in that area.
Where is the loading bay?
Right here. There's one bay here, and then there's a bay here also. There's one in front of the building, one in the back of the building. And this is the area, so you have the barriers here, so you'd have to make that maneuver, and there's no way a tractor-trailer can make that maneuver. The site plan shows a concrete storage area to the east, southeast of the nine propane tanks. The applicant should clarify what this area will be used for, what it will be stored. Right now on the plans, there's no access to it. You have parking spaces on the north and south of it that block any ability for a vehicle to get into that area, and the propane tanks to the west would block any access to that area, and then the property lines to the east, so there really needs to be some sort of means for a vehicle to enter that area if they're actually going to store anything. Staff recommends that this area be screened with a six-foot-high chain link fence with privacy slats. In front of the building, right by the loading docks and the front entrance, they're proposing a seventeen-foot, it's supposed to be, I guess, a one-way access that is really tight. I think Marty explained it to me this afternoon that that's supposed to be just for a forklift or something like that to go back and forth, not for the general public to access, but I think for the fire access, the fire marshals may want to see a twenty-four-foot access. It's easy to accomplish because you have the islands on either side of it, that you just need seven additional feet that you can scale those islands back and pick up the additional, the width. On the site plan, it shows what appears to be sidewalks along Cromer Avenue. There are no other sidewalks along Cromer Avenue, but the town may desire those in the future, and one of the decisions the fire board will need to decide is whether or not it would like to see sidewalks along this property frontage. In terms of site protection, they show what appears to be jersey barriers protecting the propane storage tanks. Those are not the most aesthetically pleasing type of barriers, and I talked with the fire marshals, they're not crazy about them either. I did speak with Marty about it earlier today, and they are, they're going to propose an alternative to that that would be both protection and a decorative feature. In front of the building, they show a five-thousand-gallon diesel storage tank. It's in the front of the yard, but again, it's going to be behind the four-foot wall, so you wouldn't see it necessarily from Cromer Avenue, but there is no protection of it from vehicle traffic or the adjacent parking lot other than the concrete curb. That's going to need to have some ballers or some other means of protection.
What do they need fuel tanks for?
That would be probably for the diesel trucks for delivery, but that would be a question for the applicant. In terms of garbage. No, this is a fuel store. I'm going to let the applicant address that. Marty, that's going to be one of the questions asked of you.
Yes.
Okay. In terms of garbage, they show one very small garbage enclosure along the eastern property line. It's approximately seven-and-a-half feet by seven-and-a-half feet. Marty's going to explain that they do have a garbage enclosure in the basement with a drop chute, so that might help satisfy, because this is a fairly large facility, so may need to enlarge that outside dumpster enclosure. We did receive some comments back on the former application from Suffolk County Planning Commission, matter of local determination. PCNG is going to have to replace some of the light poles or the electrical poles in front of the property to make them slightly taller. DOT has no comments or concerns about it. Highway Department is okay with the number of location of the curb cuts. Fire Marshal's going to have, really need to weigh in on the revised plans given the circulation issues. In terms of the water district, it is in the water district there, it's in the groundwater management zone three, and they're proposing an eight-inch water main that's available along Cromer Avenue. The town engineer raises a number of issues, is going to need a SWIP, and is going to need some additional information regarding stormwater containment and paving specifications. They did go before the Architectural Review Board. Marty can explain that. We did receive a color rendering today. There's architectural plans in your packet, but doesn't call up building material or color. The plans that you see to my left on the easel are what was presented to the Architectural Review Board. The town attorney did review the title report, and they needed some additional information regarding the number of easements and dedications along throughout the property, so they're probably going to need an updated title report with addressing the town attorney's concerns. And that addresses.
I got a couple of questions for the applicant. I see you're not taking advantage of the railroad spur. I'd like to know why. Applicant, Ray, can you hear us?
Or?
Or Marty?
I can answer. Actually, I think in the future, there are no plans to utilize the railroad spur at this time, but there would be a long-term plan to reopen that spur at some time in the future, which is part of why the site is laid out the way that it is. So, there would be some time where that will happen, but it's not in the immediate future, and it's a fairly involved process with the, from what I understand, the Department of Transportation and whatnot to get that approved. So, right now, it's not on the table, but it'd be in the future.
Okay, I'm trying to eliminate trucks on the road, and you're on a spur.
I can attest from prior applications I've worked on, getting through the MPA review process, it is, you're looking at a few years to get through that process.
I understand. And the next thing I understand you're removing the cars. Did anybody try to see if the railroad museum would be interested in them?
Yes, you can grab. Yes, they have been donated to a museum, they've been donated to a railroad museum.
Okay.
They're in the process of taking off now.
Okay. That's all I have.
What were the fire marshal's comments on a facility this size with one right next door?
They only commented on the prior application, and I can tell you, let me just see what I have. It's in your staff report. They want documentation in compliance of the fire code with the fire protection code. Again, everything that they're listing so far is in terms of needing various permits. They voiced concerns about the access roads throughout the property. Again, I believe that the fire, fire access and circulation around the site is probably the biggest concern, not only in terms of fire protection, but just general truck distribution of getting trucks in around the site. It's tight, especially around where the interaction is between the industrial building and the propane tanks.
Is this, Marty, is this in fact an expansion of Paraco?
No, it is not.
Under another corporation?
That is correct. It's a different owner. And if I could just briefly expand on the issue with the tanks, there are extensive requirements in NFPA with regard to the protection of these tanks, deluge systems, setback requirements, et cetera. All of those systems are obviously going to be incorporated into the project and reviewed and approved by the fire marshal, and everything will be in accordance with all NFPA requirements and safety requirements for code compliance and safety.
That's a lot of propane, that's a lot of propane between those two places, right in that small area.
Marty, can you explain how you're going to swap out the jersey barriers for what we talked about earlier today?
Sure. In lieu of using the jersey barriers, my client has requested that we replace them with an actual concrete wall, an actual enclosure. And on that enclosure, what we're going to do is install a cap and the same stone finish that's on the base of the building for aesthetic purposes. So, it'll serve two purposes. We do need the barrier around there for obvious safety reasons, so that if any vehicle were to go out of control, there'd be no chance of any chance of it coming in contact with the tanks. And also for aesthetics, it would really enhance the appearance as opposed to the jersey barriers. Those things really aren't that aesthetic, and they can, they're actually, I mean, if you hit them hard enough, they move. We're going to put a wall on it's reinforced, that will be complete safety as well as aesthetically improved.
Marty, I have to, Jeff, I have to reserve my comments because I only got the plan as we met tonight, so I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Marty, I did review all of the staff report today. I did put a placeholder, I did more desire to have a public hearing. I understand there are a number of revisions that need to be made to the plan. Board may desire to see those revisions prior to moving forward with the application, but I put it on as a placeholder in case the board decides to.
Well, we just got the plans tonight, so I haven't even looked at these yet.
Okay.
The five-thousand-gallon diesel tank, what was that, was that for fueling their trucks?
Correct.
And what about the, you're going to get the pine baron credits for the sanitary flow?
Yes, that is correct. We've already gotten our first comments back from Suffolk County Health Department, so we're in the process of getting the sanitary system approved, and prior to them releasing the permit, since it's ready, we will have to provide them with that, the certificates of the credits.
How might the plan change based on the DEC's determination of the tiger salamander issue?
Well, what happened initially was we had development that included coverage over the entire site. It was a much more spread-out plan, and we met with the DEC, and we were going to go for a waiver of the thirty-three percent contiguous area, which they felt we could get, but it was going to take time. So, they said, look, you could do that, but if you comply with their requirement, being that portion of the site being, you know, completely reserved and cut off, that that would be a much more expedited permit process, because that's really what they prefer. So, we did do that. My client went through the expense and the trouble of redesigning the project, and we've now preserved an entire portion of the project, which we did receive a DEC permit for, so we currently are approved and have a permit from the DEC for the project.
So, you've pretty much mitigated that concern that they had mentioned?
Yeah, they've given us a full approval. I didn't quite catch your entire response there.
But Marty, you did get a DEC permit, correct?
Yeah, we have the DEC permit. Jeff, we did forward you a copy of that. I know you have it in the file, but we have the permit from the DEC, fully approved.
Okay, if I could offer a recommendation is, I don't know, Marty, how fast you can turn around some of these revisions. We went through them today. Marty was, correct me if I put words in your mouth, Marty, I think you're pretty receptive to most of the changes and corrections that we talked about.
Yeah, I think basically a lot of the initial ones we had talked about, you know, landscaping, sidewalk along Cromer, all of the screening, the lighting, all of those were very basic comments. They're very basic, there's no issue at all. We were a little bit concerned about the six-foot fence in the front. We do have a masonry portion on the bottom. If need be, the top part, the two-foot wrought iron could be eliminated, which would bring it into the four-foot height that Jeff had mentioned. I did question though, and I'd like the board to give this consideration in the future, that under the front yard buffer in the industrial A zone under three oh one, one sixteen B two, it says that the buffer is intended to block the view of cars and the industrial uses. The intent of the code, three oh one, one sixteen, says that it's a guide, that it's not a written code. Now, I know there is a section elsewhere in the code about fences that discusses height, but that height restriction is not specifically mentioned in the industrial A area. It does say that it's up to the review board and that they're guidelines, they're not, they're guidelines, not written code items. So, I do believe that that could be utilized in this case to approve the fence as required. If it wasn't, it was deemed not to be, we could certainly remove that top portion if we had to, but we'd hate to do that for security reasons. I would hope that, you know, the board, and I know Jeff looked into it briefly, but maybe we could clarify that prior to the next meeting. The only other items that we had of concern, we already talked about the jersey barrier, that's not a problem. We're screening the diesel tank, that's not a problem. The dumpsters, again, there is a enclosed rated trash facility within the basement area that's accessible, and it has a trash chute from the second floor, so it'll take all of the trash from the upper area into that, and that will then be brought out and picked up by a carting service. So, as far as the number of dumpsters, we're very happy with what we have, and we don't feel there'll be any issue with it. The cross access, and Jeff, I spoke with Ray, and I was not clear on one item. The front access is not intended to be opened. In other words, that's going to have a control gate at all times just to allow them to go through to access the ramp down to the lower level from the propane area with forklifts. So, when I had thought that it was going to be open and we would put a sign there that said, you know, authorized vehicles only, that's really only intended to be a access that's closed, and they open the gate electronically when they come through. We do have the full cross access in the back, so I was hoping that that would suffice and that we could leave the front access dimensionally the way it is, if the board can consider that.
I think that that's one of the issues I think the fire marshal should weigh in on, Marty, but again, I don't see it as being a huge issue because you have sufficient room on the island, the island on either side of it that you can scale it back, widen it by seven feet. So, it's just a question of, do you have a twenty-four-foot wide gate or seventeen-foot gate?
Right, okay, okay. And then lastly, the issue of the access with the loading area.
Right.
The loading dock, we have two loading areas. The loading areas are exactly the size required by the code. If you read the loading code in the zoning ordinance, that is the size of the berths that are needed, and there is no need for tractor-trailers here. When I get done talking, I'd like Ray to elaborate on it. It's definitely based on their facility use, and one of the other questions that came up with Jeff and I earlier was the access to that storage area that we have, because they have an area behind the tanks where they have some onsite storage. And what we decided to do was, he looked at it and said, well, there's really no easy access to that storage. So, what we decided to do is we're going to take a couple of the parking spaces out that are closest to the loading dock by the tanks to allow access for vehicles to go behind the tank area into that little storage area, and by eliminating those spaces and creating that little driveway that goes further around the tanks, that will give drivers more room to also pull in and nose in before they back into the loading docks. So, we don't feel there's going to be any issue with that at all, and I'd like Ray to elaborate on that a little bit.
Okay, Ray, before you begin, Marty, just be mindful that you're right at your parking calculations, so I don't think you could reduce the number of parking spaces. That's why I was offering, if you could shift the tanks to the south and then take some of those parking spaces that you have on the southernmost part of the property, and then perhaps relocate them to where you were suggesting to have the space, so it's.
Yeah.
We have to play around with it a little bit. Sorry, Ray.
All right, as far as the loading dock, it will never see a tractor-trailer use. It's not designed for that, and it's not in our business plan. It's not the way we do business. Basically, what's going to use that loading dock is a, they're rack trucks that move portable tanks. They're our trucks, they're not delivery trucks that come in. When the tanks get delivered, they're offloaded in the site, but the loading dock is where we load, after they're full, they get loaded on a truck, and they go out. When they come back empty, they get unloaded on our dock. It's basically a pickup truck with a twelve-foot bed. It's a rack truck, they're straight trucks. Twelve-foot bed, eighteen-foot is the maximum size that any LP company uses as far as delivery trucks. So, again, it's really your typical pickup truck with an eight-foot bed, this is a pickup truck with a twelve-foot bed. That's what's using these ramps. The ramp is, you know, as you see, it's only a three-foot high ramp, it's not the, you know, forty-two-inch ramp with, or forty-eight-inch ramp that tractor-trailers would use. It's designed specifically for our purpose, what we have planned. So, it's twenty-seven-foot clearance between our poured concrete wall and the start of that ramp. You know, I believe that's over the size of roads, and really, it would be no problem whatsoever to back these trucks into that. Again, we are not bringing in tractor-trailers, that's not, that's not what the company does. I don't know, do you have any more, do you have a question on that?
Ray, you're talking about the delivery of tanks, you're talking about empty tanks?
Yes, what we do is the, like. Yes, what we do is the, like, the four-twenty's, they're called, the four-hundred-and-twenty-pound tanks and the one-hundred-pound tanks. We deal a lot with new construction. That's our business, is what, most of our, we don't go to homes and we don't fill up hundred-pound tanks at houses. We move thousand-gallon tanks, five-hundred-gallon tanks, four-twenty's. And what happens is these houses that are under construction, that we plan on installing a thousand-gallon tank multiples and getting that contract to supply them with gas. While they're under construction, they need temporary heat. So we work with the builders, the architects, and the engineers out, you know, in these construction sites. And we'll supply them with multiple tanks throughout their construction process to keep the house, to keep the house warm. Generators, construction. So these tanks go out, they're gone for a couple of weeks, you know, a week, ten days, fifteen days, and then they come back. That's a rotation of these portable tanks.
Ray, just one quick question.
Ray, one quick question for you. If somebody wanted to come on site with barbecue tanks, is that, is the site designed for that?
No, no, we don't, we don't do barbecue tanks. We don't, it's no retail. We don't open to the public. That's where you were talking about that crossover. That crossover is not just for a forklift to get garbage. That, we, I added that afterwards because we're gonna maintain our whole site. So whether we, we have a, like a rhino, like a four-wheeler that does pushes snow and snow blows. We have to sweep our own parklot. That's basically a controlled gate for our maintenance people to go back and forth. If it has to be twenty-four feet, that's fine. But really, that's only meant for a rhino or a forklift, a small piece of our maintenance equipment to go back and forth. So it doesn't gonna have to go out onto Cromer and then come back in on the other side of the fence. That, that was why we added that gate in there. But we, we don't have any, we're not putting in anything here where the public can come inside that fenced-in area and walk up and get a barbecue tank. So that's not our business.
All right, so we gotta get some revised.
Jeff, can you, can you find out for us how much propane is stored at the adjacent facility?
On Paraco?
Yes. And also, I recall when Paraco was built, the fire department, through the fire marshal's office, those, those tanks, storage tanks were originally positioned in a way that they, the head and foot of the tank, head or foot of the tank, were facing the entrance. And the fire marshal, because of the fire department, wanted them spun, so that when the fire department had to go in, they weren't aimed right at the people going in there to fight any kind of emergency. So it appears to me that these tanks are facing almost in that direction. And if you could, just, just go through that other file and confirm with the fire marshal and see that we're not doing what we avoided at the other property here.
Okay.
I think the fire marshal's comments are gonna be very telling for us. I don't know if we could get their comments by the next, by the public hearing.
Well, I don't think we should have the public hearing. I mean, we just saw these plans tonight.
I would like to weigh in on that a little bit. I don't think that any of these issues are of any consequence and the purpose of the public hearing is to raise.
We, Marty, we know what the purpose of a public hearing is and it's our choice, okay? And there are significant issues that need to be addressed. And if these plans have to be revised for any of them, it's a big change. So we're not gonna hold the public hearing as proposed here. We saw these plans for the first time tonight. I haven't even had a chance to look at them, neither did Joe. So we're not having a public hearing as proposed for the next meeting.
I would like to get a vote of the board on that. And also, I'd like to mention that we were one of the first, we were the first meeting of the special permit on March seventeenth. We were scheduled for the first meeting that was canceled by COVID. So we've been on a holding pattern, as has everybody else during this period of time. And my client certainly has gone through all of the steps with the planning department. And this application's been into the planning department for a long time.
We got these tonight. We got these tonight. So you wanna vote of the board. George, do you wanna have the public hearing within a month?
No.
Joe?
I don't.
What do you mean, within a month?
It's, it's a resolution. I have it in one month from tonight.
Okay, well, I think we'll bring it up at the next meeting and see if we're ready.
Okay, so we have three, three no's, so it's, it's not gonna happen at that time. We gotta see the revised plan. We could do that too. I mean.
Marty, what I think we can do is we'll, we'll meet with the fire marshals and we'll get the plans revised accordingly. And then if we get them in time, we'll be on for the next agenda for discussions.
I want your comments addressed.
That would be at the next meeting or the?
I just, that's a lot of propane.
Yep. What's the next day of the next meeting?
I mean, if, October is a five Thursday month. So if the board, hypothetically, if they turn around and address these comments, if the board's satisfied at the next meeting, you actually would be able to get on for the first November meeting, because October is a five Thursday month.
Okay. So let's see what happens then, if they address everything.
Arthur, you don't need to sleep. All right, so Marty, what I'll do is I'll sit, we'll talk again tomorrow, oh, not tomorrow, not anymore. If you would, we'll talk on Monday. And we'll sit down with the fire marshal. I think that's the most important issue before us. And the circulation, the demo is gonna be a paramount issue.
Okay. Okay, anything else? All right, thank you. Next item is item six, Maris Farm Stand.
Mr. Cuddy, can you hear us?
I think he.
We can't hear you.
You may be on mute.
Charlie, we can't hear you.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
All right, so this is just a quick update about, you know, the applicant from Maris Farm, located at the corner of Town Avenue and Roanoke and Riverhead. In letter dated September eighth, twenty twenty, Mr. Cuddy, the applicant's attorney provided planning staff with a copy of the drainage calculations that are signed, sealed by a licensed New York State P E with the revised site plan dated August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, depicting the twenty-four-foot wide curb cut and five-foot ashtray apron and a parking lot layout. To date, the applicant has addressed all the concerns raised by the planning board, planning staff, and deputy highway superintendent. The planning staff is recommending that the board grant farm stand approval with the couple conditions. Just so the board is aware, the town attorney's office did contact me approximately two weeks ago with the concern raised about the wood, wood burning stove in the greenhouse. They were concerned that it was considered a furnace under Suffolk County law, chapter two, chapter four ninety. And chapter four ninety reads that no person shall sell, purchase, construct, or install a new outdoor wood burning furnace after the effective date of this chapter being April first, twenty thirteen. Upon conducting a site visit and meeting with the applicant and the owners of the farm, the wood burning stove in question was not an outdoor furnace. It is related to the agricultural use of the greenhouse to keep the plants warm in the winter. And that satisfied both the town attorney and the fire marshal's office with regards to conditions imposed on the applicant by the resolution. The greenhouse and barn should not be used for, shall not be used for sale of agricultural products to the public, nor open to the public, nor used for human habitation. The agricultural barn shall only be used for dry storage, no restrooms or sinks. And prior to the issuance of a building permit, the use of the wood burning stove is for agricultural use and not for conventional cooking. The stone and bird must comply with New York State Fire Code. And if the wood, wood, wood burning stove does not comply with state, county, and town code and does not relate to the agricultural use of the property, the wood burning stove shall be removed. And they also, conditions upon the resolution where they must resubmit to the Suffolk County Farmland Committee for the approval of the twenty-four-foot wide curb cut and the five-foot ashtray apron. Mr. Cuddy provided me today with the Suffolk County Farmland Committee did make a decision and they did re-improve the curb cut and the ashtray apron. And they, they did meet conditions being C of the proposed resolution. The only other condition with that be they provide a Mylar and six paper prints of the county-approved site plan, prepared, updated August twenty-seven, twenty twenty, to be submitted to the planning board for the chairman of the planning board to affix his signature. Does any member of the board have any questions?
So they addressed the farmland community's, the committee's issues with the, with the original?
Yes.
Okay. Second thing is, the, there's two greenhouses there. As part of it, which I think we should put in there, also that they have to tear the other one down. If not, it won't get torn down. That should be part of the approval.
So I can speak to that. The first greenhouse on the site with the wood burning stove is housing all the plants. And when I met with the owners of the farm, the hoop house with the tar absorber, they did tell me that it's used to house the equipment. Speaking with them, they did inform me that they want, their plan is to build the barn to house all their equipment in their dry storage.
Right, and then as soon as the barn is built, they will, they will remove the other one. I just think it should be part of the, of the resolution, that's all.
Do you have any objections to that, Mr. Cuddy?
I couldn't hear all of it, I'm sorry. It was, it was low.
I had to repeat it into the mic here.
Can you hear me now, Charlie?
Yeah, I can hear it now.
Okay. What I was saying is they, there are two greenhouses there. When the barn is built, one of them should, is supposed to be removed.
Okay.
All I want is in the resolution that when it's built, that it is removed.
Can I, can I just ask you why? Will be the reason of?
Well, they said they were going to remove it. Let's make sure they do.
Did the applicant say he's gonna remove it?
Under, discussing with them, they advised me that the purpose of the agricultural barn was to store their dry storage and their agricultural equipment.
All right, but they, did they indicate they wanted to take it down once?
They did not indicate that to me.
I don't, I don't see the public benefit to force him to take down something that he has.
All the rights are on this property?
Yes.
Nothing's been sold or?
Nope, the county.
Yeah, the county rights are sold on this piece.
Okay, so what is actually allowable to, to put on here maximum?
I have to defer to the applicant's attorney on that.
Yeah, I don't think that the county had any concern with his, his greenhouses for two reasons. One, they were back and off the farm. And secondly, the greenhouses aren't that large. I mean, he, he's a guy that grows various vegetables. He grows flowers. I don't think anybody had an objection. He's been.
No, I, I don't, Mr. Cuddy, I don't think that we're objecting to that. The question is, are there any other restrictions on how much, like, could he put up ten more greenhouses if he wanted and three more barns on this property? That's the question.
I don't think he could, because I think that the county itself would say that that's not part of what they approved.
Okay, and I think George's point is.
They're, they're just, that was a temporary structure anyway. It's not, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so all I'm saying is, you know, it's, it's, it doesn't look that well constructed. I think it would be, I think it would be better to remove it once the barn is built. That's all I'm saying, really.
I just don't know if he needs the two greenhouses. I mean, I.
Okay, well, then, then, then in the resolution, put down that he wants to keep both of them. Because he only has one.
I think.
But there are two existing.
Yeah, I think he would prefer that you say that he has the two existing.
Well, then change it, change it, you know, I'm just trying to make the resolution.
Yeah, well, it's, again, nobody, we're not opposed to what he's doing here with the farm stand, but we, we always see the back of ourselves into a corner as to what the potential build-out is when the, when the parcel is protected. You know, is his business gonna take off in two years? Is he gonna put in two more greenhouses and two more barns? The question really is, is what is allowable under the restrictions for the protected parcel? And I think, I mean, and I'm sure he wants to get this passed tonight. So perhaps we could just reference in accordance with the county development rights with regard to farmland. And I think it kinda, at least we, we're not, you know, approving anything that, that we're not aware of at this point that may be conflicting with that.
Good way to, you know, make it safe, that's all. Just make it right, in accordance with the county farmland rules and regs.
That, that would be fine.
That makes, makes sense.
Just to reference it.
Yeah, good idea.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Cuddy.
Thank you.
Okay, no public hearing scheduled tonight. Any, anybody waiting for public comments?
There are five people that I don't believe are appearing here.
Okay, could you? Okay, if there's anyone in the waiting room that wants to address the board on any public comments or resolutions, we see that there are people there, so if you can, if you wanna speak, just unmute your mic and, and just identify yourself, please. Okay, I'll ask one more time. Is anyone waiting to speak on the resolutions or any public comments? No one is indicating they are, so we will move on with the resolutions.
Make a motion to move resolution number fifty-nine for the Maris Farm Stand as amended, so moved.
Second motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution fifty-nine as amended to, to include the counting farmland regulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, resolution is approved.
I'll move resolution number sixty-two, which grants an extension of time for the chairman to sign the subdivision map, six oh nine Northville Turnpike.
Second motion.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution sixty-two, six oh nine Northville Turnpike LLC, extension of time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, resolution is approved.
Move resolution number sixty-three for the East End Country Kitchens, granting preliminary site plan approval, so moved.
As amended.
As amended.
Second motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution sixty-three as amended to include the public hearing that was held. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, resolution is approved.
I'll move resolution sixty-four, Compania Residence to chapter two nineteen, to demolish the existing one-story frame and construct a new two-story frame.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution sixty-four for chapter two nineteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
What are we doing, five?
I think it's on the agenda. We should probably take it up.
Perhaps table it?
Officially table it?
If that's your intention.
Well, we can't, can we really table it since there's a specific date on here? They won't be able to meet that date if we don't act on it tonight?
You're allowed to table it. But if you choose not to table it, you can, you could determine to deny it, but it's really up to you.
Okay, so motion to table resolution sixty-five to schedule a public hearing for forty-eight Cromer Avenue.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so sixty-five is tabled. Number six. On the agenda.
Move resolution number sixty-six for HK Ventures of Calton LLC to schedule a public secret scoping session on November fifth, so moved.
Motion made and seconded to, to approve resolution sixty-six to schedule a public scoping session for HK Ventures on November fifth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, resolution's approved.
I'll move resolution sixty-seven.
Second.
I thought we didn't have to make a.
For this one, we do.
Yeah, okay.
So motion made and seconded to approve resolution sixty-seven, Country Trail Subdivision requesting town board default on a security failure to complete subdivision improvements. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, resolution's approved. Okay, no public comments. I'll just make a note.
We got somebody up on screen.
Okay. Chloe, any interest in speaking? Unmute? We can't hear if you wanna speak? Okay, perhaps it's just someone listening in. Okay, perhaps it's just someone listening in. Um, and just under public comments, I guess, just to make note that we did receive a letter from the EFCAL Watch Coalition dated, uh, September twenty-first, twenty twenty. Uh, the planning board did receive that.
Make a motion to remove the minutes of the September seventeenth, two thousand twenty, planning board minutes, so moved.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of September seventeenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Minutes are approved. Any other business? Okay, next meeting is Thursday, October fifteenth at three P M. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a good night, thank you.
Yeah, have a good weekend, everybody.